The Bridgewater Rainham Regional School Committee on Wednesday, December 14th, 2011, to order at 7:00 in the evening at the Bridgewater Rainham Regional High School. We are returning from executive session with nothing to report at this time, no votes taken. If we can continue, we thank you all for coming and please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would like to ask if we could have a moment of silence. We've recently lost three former Bridgewater Rainham graduates, tragic loss, three young, vibrant individuals that I'm sure would have made us all proud in the future. It's certainly a great loss. Our hearts go out to the sympathy to the families and friends of those individuals. So if we could please have a moment of silence. Thank you. Continuing with our agenda, we have the approval of minutes of November 16th, 2011. Do we have a motion to approve? Motion by Mrs. Layton, second by Dr. Pacey. Any discussion? Dr. Przewodowski.
Yes, on page six, I'd like to make a change that under new business, third sentence, this proposal change will be based on student age, maturity level, and nature of the trip. In these cases, the principal will not attend the trip, but will determine the number of chaperones appropriate with the superintendent having final approval.
Okay, so we could make that change as an amendment. Motion to approve the amendment. Motion by Mrs. Layton, second by Dr. Pacey. Vote on the, I guess we can vote on the minutes as amended or the amendment first. Vote on the amendment. All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. Now on the minutes as amended, motion to approve. And I think we still need to vote.
We just voted.
All in favor. Any opposed? Okay, the minutes as amended are approved. Thank you. Continuing correspondence, Dr. Forbes.
Yes, I would like to bring to the attention of the school committee, in case you didn't read the article today, we have a student, a seventh grader at the Bridgewater Middle School, who took top honors in the Massasoit Spelling League. She has won first prize and Allison Nicole Turner is here this evening with her family and I am so impressed with her brother sitting there reading so nicely. And I would like to invite Allison to come down. We have a certificate for you, Allison. It's a certificate of recognition. This certificate is awarded to Allison Nicole Turner, Grade Seven, Bridgewater Middle School in recognition of your achieving first place in the oral section of the Massasoit Spelling League's meet on December 2nd, 2011, for the Bridgewater Rainham Regional School District. And it is signed by our school committee chairwoman, Patricia Riley, and also your superintendent, Dr. Forbes. Congratulations. And I'd like you to turn around and show the audience your plaque. Please hold that up. Could you read that, what it says on there?
It says Massasoit Spelling League, first place individual for all meet 2011.
Well, you bring us great honor and we are so proud of you. And what I'd like to do is have you shake the hands of everyone here at the table and then you can pick this up. Take that also, so you can shake everybody's hand. First, congratulations.
Congratulations.
And we are so very proud because typically the private parochial school students excel in spelling and we just want to say that here at Bridgewater Rainham, we are getting it right. And I see that your class advisor and teacher, Mrs. Jackie Fratidis, has just come in. Thank you for all the work and I love the way you practice with the children. Great job and it's paying off, so we are so proud of you. Thank you, Allison.
Thank you very much.
These past few weeks have been difficult with the tragic loss of members of the community. Our heartfelt condolences go out to the families. We are working with counselors to meet the social and emotional needs of our students as they grapple with the issue of suicide. The high school will have a presentation by the Good Samaritans on suicide prevention this week. We have professionals who will provide resources and contacts for assistance. Please call the high school for more information. Note that our district will be working with the fire and police departments along with the Department of Mental Health to address the issue on a broader community level and there will be more information to follow in the near future. I would like to take this time to remind everyone that Friday, December 23rd, is a half day of school for students. The winter recess is from Monday, December 26th through Monday, January 2nd, 2012. School reopens on Tuesday, January 3rd, 2012. Tomorrow night, the high school will be holding its annual holiday concert at 7:00 PM and will feature the show choir, concert choir, and concert band. The concert is a wonderful family event full of absolutely beautiful music that will lift everyone's spirits. You will marvel at the students' voices and their instrumental talents. This is a concert not to be missed. It's free, it's open to the public, so bring the kids, your grandparents, your neighbors, family and friends, and enjoy the show. I wish everyone happy holidays and a very happy and healthy new year. Thank you. Now I will get to the correspondents. But I wanted to make those comments and plug the concert. It truly is a beautiful time and I hope everyone will stop by. You'll leave singing.
That's right.
That's a guarantee. I do have, actually Chairman Riley, if you would read the letter we received and then I'll take the other correspondence.
Sure. We did receive a letter from Sam Baumgartner addressed to the school committee. Over the past few years, you have faced significant budget issues. Concomitantly, you have also been bombarded with the national, statewide, and local push to boost test scores in language arts, math, and science. Amidst all of this, you have managed to maintain a commitment to physical education, a commitment which I and others very much appreciate and value. At this time, I ask you to review the enclosed materials. My professional organization, the American Alliance for Health, Physical Education, Recreation, and Dance, and one of its sub-associations, the National Association for Sport and Physical Education, have been promoting the Let's Move in Schools program. This program is also supported and promoted by First Lady Michelle Obama. The key idea here is to promote physical activity in schools with strong physical education programs as the foundation. In addition to PE classes, LMIS suggests developing before and after-school activity programs, promoting activity among staff members and including the community. Among the enclosures is a description of LMIS and a survey designed for superintendents and the school committee members. I urge you to take the survey, discover and reflect on strengths and weaknesses, and develop ways to improve physical education and physical activity opportunities. You may want principals and PE staff members to take the survey as well. I would hope this could be an agenda item at a future school committee meeting and I would be happy to attend and share in the discussion. Please feel free to contact me if you have any questions or comments. Thanks for your consideration for taking time to keep physical education and physical activity in the forefront of your thinking. Sincerely, Sam Baumgartner. Could we refer that to you, Dr. Forbes, to perhaps put it on the agenda for January?
Well, I'm not exactly sure.
Or February.
Yes, I'm not sure of the date, but I did want to mention that I will have our central office team take a look at it. We've looked at the survey and we see that there are some similarities to one that was recently given out by the Department of Education. So we'll look to see if it's the same or similar and then look at the survey and report back to the school committee. I'm not sure if we'll be able to do that in January.
January, February, sure.
But certainly, and we can contact Sam and let him know.
Thank you.
I have a letter from the town of Bridgewater from the Traffic Study Committee. Dear Dr. Forbes, at its meeting on November 17th, 2011, the Traffic Study Committee unanimously voted to formally request that the regional school district permanently remove the gate at the North Street entrance to the regional high school. Your attention to this important public safety matter is appreciated. I have a meeting scheduled with the town manager to discuss that tomorrow and I believe school committee member, Mrs. Layton, is going to be attending that meeting along with me and Al Barrancelli, our Director of Facilities. And I'll be happy to report back to you after we have that meeting. The next letter I have is from the town of Bridgewater, Office of Elder Affairs. Dear Superintendent Forbes and Bridgewater Rainham School District, I am writing to thank you and the Bridgewater Rainham Schools for the generous donation of food items for our pantry. Your donation helps us to provide for those experiencing difficult times. Our mission is to assist the community in as many ways as we can. Thanks again for the generous donation. It is deeply appreciated. Lorraine D. Carrosa, Director of Elder Affairs. And in relation to that, we also received a thank you from the Bridgewater Food Pantry. And it reads, Dear Dr. Forbes, the Thanksgiving food drive done through the K-8 schools in Bridgewater during November was a tremendous success. Enough food was donated to fill baskets for several needy Bridgewater families for Thanksgiving and also at Christmas. It is a wonderful tribute to the students and staff of the Bridgewater Schools. The Bridgewater Food Pantry shelves have been stocked and they will have enough food to provide assistance for families for months to come. Thank you for allowing us to continue this important project for Bridgewater families who are struggling, especially at this time of year. We are fortunate to have such caring and committed staff and students in our schools. They provided the energy, spirit, and help to make this year's food drive the best ever. A very special thank you also goes to Al Barrancelli and his crew for picking up and delivering the three truckloads of food donations. We couldn't have done it without his help. Also thanks to Bridgewater Middle School, Claire Brennan, Kathy Martelli, Derek Swenson, Williams Intermediate School, Matthew Clark, Nancy Kirk, Jane Turner, Kathy Wood, and the Mitchell Elementary School, Roz Bettisini, Heidi Latandra, Brian Lynch, and Deb Ollie. So very nice letters to receive at this time of year. And the final letter that I received is from the town of Rainham. This is from Town Administrator Randy Buckner and it is in regards to the polling place for the new precinct. At its meeting on December 6th, 2011, the Board of Selectmen voted unanimously to appoint a precinct placement committee to find a polling place for the newly created precinct. The board includes Chairman Joseph R. Pacheco, soon-to-be temporary Town Clerk Marcia Sylvia, and Superintendent of Schools Jack Willen Forbes, or designee, and himself on the committee. Ideas put forward so far involve adding a third precinct to the middle school, which hosts two precincts now, or combining all four Rainham precincts at one of the schools. I'd like to have an initial meeting on Monday, December 19th, at 2:00 PM at the Town Hall if possible. Please let me know if you are able to attend and we will certainly do that. And at this time, I would like Madam Chair to invite you also to attend if your schedule allows.
Sure.
So that we can look at how the new precinct is going to impact the schools. For those who may not be aware, in the towns of Bridgewater and Rainham, the voting takes place at the schools. So I look forward to having that meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I think we want to move up on acceptance of gifts. Dr. Forbes, can we have a motion to do so, Mrs. Layton? Motion by Mrs. Layton, second by?
Second.
Dr. Przewodowski. Any discussion? Hearing them all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. Dr. Forbes?
Yes, we are very pleased to announce to the committee and to ask for your vote of approval to accept gifts from the University of Phoenix. The university has very generously offered to donate 30 desktop computers, 27 17-inch flat-screen monitors, 1 32-inch Sony TV with stand, five projectors, and these are long-view projectors that we would use in our auditoriums at the middle school, one Sony Handycam, and two laptops with docking stations. I would ask that the committee consider approving that. And I would like to invite to the podium, Madam Chair, with your permission, two representatives from the University of Phoenix. Jody Ashbrook, who is Campus Director, and also Allison Moreauz, who is the Director of Academic Affairs. Ladies, would you please go to the podium?
This is a wonderful list of items. It's like Christmas is around.
Christmas has come early for us.
Well, yes, it has and it was our pleasure to be able to provide those donations to you. Our commitment is educating the communities that we are in and it was our pleasure to be able to partner with you and provide the computers and the laptops and the monitors to provide the best possible experience for your students that you can. So any way that we can partner with our local communities to invest in our children for the future tomorrow through education is our mission and we look forward to being able to partner with you more in the future. So thank you for allowing us to do that and be able to share our gains and our commitment of education with you.
Thank you.
Sure.
And I just want to have one comment. I would like to thank you for inviting us here tonight to be able to meet with you and say we are so glad to be able to contribute to the education of our students and our future leaders. University of Phoenix is very committed to education, so thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We are very pleased to have as many K-16 partnerships as we can. We know that it's essential that our job is to prepare our students for careers and for college and anything that we can do to do that, we appreciate and you will make it easier for our students and our teachers to be able to give our students a better preparation for entering, hopefully, college in the future. So thank you so much. We appreciate it.
And do we have a motion to accept the gift?
Summum.
By Dr. Summum, by Dr. Przewodowski, second by Mrs. Layton. Any discussion? Hearing them all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. Thank you so much. Okay, returning now to the regular order of business, we have, is that correspondence completed, Dr. Forbes?
Yes, thank you.
Public comment. Does anyone from the audience wish to address the school committee at this time? If so, please, you're welcome to come up to the podium. Anybody? Sure. Okay. Hearing none. We'll continue with educational reports. Student Advisory Council, James Curtin. Welcome, James.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This month, the School Committee Advisory Board has decided to take a look at some of the standards that the high school is using in their self-study program, partnered with New England Association of Schools and Colleges. We're very committed to improving school culture and student leadership and we took a look at some of the programs within the school designed to build those programs. NEAS, the New England Association of Schools and Colleges, has certain indicators that they use when determining how well a school has developed leadership programs for their students. They say a school community should build a safe, positive, respectful, and supportive culture that fosters student responsibility and shared ownership, pride, and high expectations for all. And we took a look at some of the programs within the high school that helped build those commitments to pride and having a safe and positive school. One thing that was looked at recently in conjunction with the high school administration was a forum for students to discuss some issues within the school and have an opportunity to collaborate with the administration and provide them feedback on things that they believe should be improved. We spoke with the Vice Principal, Dick Warnock, to create what we're calling a senior coffee house. The idea behind this is to give students who are seniors, who are in good standing with the school, time during the ASV period to talk to each other in a relaxed setting to be able to look at some things that they believe should be improved on, to build a sense of pride in school ownership, and then be able to meet with the administration, faculty members, and report back to them to build a line of communication. We hope that this time would foster that communication. When coming to, when working on this proposal, we thought it was important to have students very active in creating the rules that govern this senior coffee house. The New England Association of Schools and Colleges says that programs like this should have students feel a sense of pride and ownership in their school. By creating the rules that they must follow and by presenting their ideas to the administration, we feel that this would increase student pride and ownership in their school. And that transfers to a wide variety of things. Students that have pride in their education are more active in the classroom, they feel commitment to preserving, you know, the quality of the building, and we feel that ideas like this will start the ball rolling. We hope that students will create more proposals like this. Also, the New England Association of Schools and Colleges likes to see students that are involved and meaningful and define roles in decision-making committees and other things of that nature. Boards like the School Committee Advisory Board, different committees that work with the principal, that have student members, are all very prominent within the high school. Students know who students are, that they can speak to if they need to get ideas presented to the administration. And from the position of the School Committee Advisory Board, we think that the high school's commitment to school culture and leadership is very strong and over the coming months and through 2013, when the high school goes through the evaluation process, we would like to work with the administration to continue to approve school culture and leadership. Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Forbes, do you have any question?
Well, I haven't put any curigs in budget. And I don't know if we can serve caffeine to underage folks, but other than that, James, I think it's a wonderful idea. I think anytime we can involve students in decision-making, if we can open lines of communication, I think that you have my support. So I look forward to working with your principal and seeing what we need to do to make those things happen. Thank you.
Any questions from any members of the committee? Comments? James, this little coffee house would be right within the school structure.
That's correct. We've worked with a Vice Principal, the Director of Food Services, and everything's been coordinated. They're okay with setting up an urn of coffee and whatever snacks they would provide at cost.
Now I have to run it past the wellness center or the wellness policy. But as long as you're working with Chartwell's, that's good.
That's correct. They've given us their support on that.
Just let me know when your first meeting is so I can be there to share a cup of coffee. That's great. Excellent. Any other comments? Thank you very much, James. Anything else you'd like to report at this time?
Not this time.
Thank you. Okay, continuing, educational reports on Anti-Bullying Task Force Stand Up Award, Bridgewater Middle School.
Well, Mrs. Swenson has had some wonderful press and some wonderful things going on this week, so would you come up, please, and tell the committee about the Stand Up project and what the award is all about?
James DeCapp. Well, it's an honor to be here this evening, Dr. Forbes, Madam Chair, members of the school committee. Upon Ms. Bastoni, my wonderful Assistant Principal's hire, two years ago, one of our initial conversations was about how we were going to improve the school climate and culture within our building and also address the new anti-bullying law that had just been passed. And one of the ideas she had come up with was this outstanding idea of an anti-bullying task force. She then took that information and met with our wonderful guidance staff of Ms. Deidra Sanchez and Ms. Terry O'Brien and the Anti-Bullying Task Force was born. Over the last two years, we've had over 100 students participate in this program and they not only educate students on the dangers of bullying, but they also talk about positive citizenship. And those are the real things that we've tried to impose this year and implement this year and actually have a service component similar to what the high school was doing with the community service. Through all of their efforts, the Stand Up 2011 Committee had contacted Dr. Forbes and she had passed it along to me and I thought that they needed to be recognized for all their efforts. The climate and culture in the school has never been greater and we have conversations all the time that there's a direct correlation between a positive school climate and student achievement. So I would like to, at this time, invite Ms. Bastoni to the podium so she can kind of give you some details of the award that they received yesterday at Northeastern University.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Swenson, and good evening, school committee and Madam Chair. I've always wanted to know what it felt like to win a Grammy and I think this is.
Excellent.
Yesterday, we went to Stand Up 2011, which was organized by support and society at Northeastern University and the Rendon Group, and also had over 100 community and corporate sponsors behind this program. And the focus of the program was to get as many schools and as people involved to take a united stand against bullying. And as it turned out, it has, was the largest event like this across the nation to date. So yesterday, we took 60 children and they made a concession for us to bring them all on stage. I had heard about this award through the link and so we, a parent nominated us, filled out the application, and met with the organizers of the Stand Up program, the Rendon Group, and they were very, very impressed about our program. And I think what impressed them the most was we were really taking a firm stance against bullying and providing the education about bullying, but also that we were adding a service learning component as bully prevention. And our goal there is if you teach kids good citizenship skills and how to pay it forward, that you won't have any bullying because they will be acting on the good and right principles that we are trying to teach them each and every day. So they were very excited about this approach. So yesterday, we all hopped on a bus and went into Boston, into Northeastern University, and we took 60 students and 10 parents and they gave us. and we took 60 students and 10 parents, and they gave us front row seats, which was very nice. I was in front of speakers that were the sizes of refrigerators, so I will never hear the same again. But it was really a great experience because what they combined was, they brought in a lot of celebrities, local celebrities, and then also Martha Coakley, actually, our district attorney, gave out some of the awards, and there were local DJs and Bruins players. It was a wide variety of people. And when they invited us up, we had two student speakers who couldn't have done more nicely for us in presenting our program and accepting the award, and I could have been more proud of our students. Their behavior, it was almost too good. We were hoping they would hoot and holler and shout, and they just walked up there dutifully and accepted their reward, and they all had their matching t-shirts on, and they just are so proud of this because they've worked very, very hard. And I have to give a lot of credit to our last year's group who paved the way to expand our force this year to over 60 members. And as in any good thing, it's all about teamwork, and I really would like to take some time to say some thank yous. Terry O'Brien and Deidre Sanchez, they have rolled up their sleeves 100%, and they will do anything, take any direction, and go with it. And I couldn't run this program, Mr. Swenson and I couldn't run it together without these two women, so thank you, Deidre Sanchez and Terry O'Brien. This year, one of our goals also was to add parents' contingency to the group, and I really wanted to have them come into the school, not only to help us, but to see what we're doing and, you know, work with the students on that sort of level. And we had an overwhelming response. I had so many chaperone volunteers for it yesterday that I had to turn a lot of people down. And so we have a really good parent contingency this year, and that has made a big difference because with this number of students, it's much easier to run it, we have more resources, they will go out and they will draw up more support, and it's turned into a very big community effort rather than just a small program at a middle school. So we're hoping to expand it even further with our service learning projects. Actually, we have done an intergenerational thing, brought the seniors into the community. So that's the direction we're trying to move this in. So I was so, so happy yesterday to actually have the opportunity to accept this award on behalf of Bridgewater Rendan Regional School District and Bridgewater Middle School, and it says Empower Peace 2011 Stand Up Award Outstanding Anti-Bullying Program Presented to the Bridgewater Middle School on December 13, 2011. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Forbes.
Yes, Ms. Bastoni, could you talk to or speak to discipline at the school?
You know, it has changed a lot in the last year and a half since we started this program, and what we're finding is a lot less rumors, which is a really big problem in middle schools. Probably the number one form of bullying in a middle school is rumors and just nasty mean comments that spread around the school. And we really, we've had such a reduction in that kind of behavior. The kids report things that they see that are not right, and we have our bully box, and I'll get anonymous notes in there, so-and-so is really giving somebody a hard time. And when it starts to form that consistent pattern where a lot of people report it and I can get to the bottom of it, that kind of behavior is stopping. And we really, really stress what it takes to be part of the community, part of a successful learning community, and it starts with the students. And our teachers as well, I owe them a lot of thanks for them supporting us and our projects as well as teaching those kinds of skills to our students each and every day. So yes, we are seeing a nice difference.
Thank you. For the committee, I'd like to inform you that any suspension in the district, I get an incident report, and I review those, and I can't remember when the last one is that I received from the Bridgewater Middle School. So from my perspective, I'm seeing a decrease in suspensions.
We like to keep them in school at all costs.
Excellent. Any committee members come in and some questions? Okay, I know from being involved in a grant that one of our Rendan schools received an anti-bullying many years ago, that to be successful, you need to involve everybody, and that's obviously what you've done at Bridgewater Middle School, and that's how it works, and to empower and involve your students, that's the key to success. So congratulations and keep up your great work.
Thank you.
We're very proud of that award, and hopefully you'll have it on display and then bring it down to...
I hid it in office.
Yeah.
Oh, no, it'll go on our front foyer, and this is one of five in the nation.
Really?
Wow. And the only middle school.
Actually, there was one other one that gentleman had given me the information. I know I was disappointed. But we were very proud to accept this, and thank you for all your support, Dr. Forbes. You've been behind us the whole way, and the school committee for your support as well.
Thank you very much.
And I guess we'll have to share it. But five in the nation, that's wonderful. Thank you for all of your efforts on behalf of our students.
Thank you very much. Thanks for having me.
And you also, Mr. Swenson.
Thank you.
Okay, continuing. Here we have English Language Learners update, Mrs. Hayalini.
What you're getting is a handout that I just went briefly referred to as I continue on. Periodically, what I'd like to do is just give the committee an update of where we are with our English Language Learning Program. As you know, last year, we underwent a coordinated program review from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. During the review, they did find that we, as a district, we had several weaknesses, which we are addressing through a corrective action plan, which was approved by the department. Some of them were simple paper concerns, if you will, meaning we needed to translate more of our documents into various languages, or there were grammatical errors. But one of the major concerns that came about through the review was the proper identification of our English Language Learners in the district. So what we did, and actually, this went out in September to every student in the district. That's the cover page that you're looking at. This was the home language survey. Every student in the district, when they register, gets this as part of their registration packet, but in an effort to make sure that we were identifying all of the students, we had everyone do this again. What happens is when these forms are returned, on any of the forms where it's checked off "no" to "is English your child's primary home language?", if those were checked off "no", what happened is those particular children were given an English language assessment by one of our English Language Learner teachers. By the way, we had, at that particular time, we had two teachers, they're contracted through North River Collaborative. Now, what happened is the teachers, these teachers gave assessments to our students, and it was very interesting to find out. We did a comparison. In 2006, we had approximately six students who were identified as English Language Learners. Based on our October 1 report, we had 63. Now, that was the October 1 report. Since October through December, we have subsequently identified more students. We have approximately 70, and this week, our teachers are testing about five more students. So at the end of December, if you will, we're probably going to have 75 students who are considered English Language Learners. Now, as a result of this, one of the concerns the Department of Education had was the fact that we were not providing our students with the proper amount of instructional time that they needed to have based on DESE regulations. Now, what this simply means is when students are tested, they're given a, they're assigned a level of instruction based on these assessment tests, and with these assessment levels, students are basically required to have a minimum certain amount of instruction time. For example, if a student is tested and they're considered a Level 1 beginner, that student needs to have about two and a half hours per day of instruction in English. If they're considered an advanced beginner, it would be the same, they need about two and a half hours of instruction per day. Level 3 would be considered an early intermediate, that student needs one to two hours per day. There's a Level 4 and a Level 5, and those need about two and a half hours of instruction per week. Now, if you look at that, we're looking at approximately 70 students, and we have a good portion of students who need the two and a half hours per day. You can group them based on their particular level, but because we have so many students at different levels, it's very, very difficult. So in order to get an accurate picture of what staffing that we need for our English Language Program, we're working with Debbie Zakarian, who is an English Language Consultant. She's nationally known, she also works for the U.S. Department of Education, and she's working with us to look at all of the students that we have that are in the program and potentially what our staffing needs will be. Because we have so many students, we have recently contracted with North River to hire a third teacher, but based upon these, for example, the two and a half hours per day of some of our students, we're looking at the potential for an additional, for actually, next year, we're looking at the potential for four to five English ELL teachers. Again, these are preliminary assessments. What we're going to be doing within the next week is taking a hard look at where the students are now and looking, where will these students be? Will they be moving up a level? Can we project where they might be so we can ascertain how many staff members we're going to need? This was one of the major concerns that came out of the report from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and I will have a report for you before the next school committee in January. We're finalizing all of this information. In addition, we've been found that we, all of the teachers in the district need to be trained to deal with students who are considered English Language Learners. So we're continually doing professional development, both in district and sending teachers out. What I gave you on the second page, just for information, is, again, as I mentioned previously, we don't have just one set language, not a group of students who are just Portuguese-speaking or just Spanish-speaking. I think if you look at that, we have a large amount. We go from Portuguese to Italian to Filipino to Greek, Russian, we have a variety of languages. And on the second side, I gave you, this is as of the October 1 report, where our students are who are English Language Learners. And as you can see, we have, the majority of them are basi, there's not really, well, Liberty has 16 students, but again, we're getting students who are coming in at various age levels. This week, the teachers are testing students at Mitchell in grades one and two. So we don't even have an absolute large group at one particular level, so that makes it very difficult to provide some of the services. So what we're going to do is have to take all of that into account when we do our assessment. So that's about where we are right now. Again, as I said, I'll have a report for you before the next January meeting.
Thank you. Any comments or questions, Dr. Forbes?
Yes, our student population is changing, and as a result, we're going to need to make sure that our educational programs are modified to meet the needs of our students.
Thank you. Any members have questions? How long do the students receive services? I mean, if we're servicing them this year, do we again next year? Is it on an individual basis?
It's going to be on an individual basis until we feel the students are absolutely able to sit in their academic classrooms and understand orally, be able to orally respond, be able to read and write. What also happens is after a student has completed the program and they're back in their academic classes, what happens is you need to monitor them for two years as well. So what that means is the English Language Learner teacher would also have to meet with the academic teachers just to make sure that the students are doing as well as they should. There have been instances where we've had a student in the classroom, and he or she has been doing well for three or four months, and then all of a sudden, things seem to have fallen apart, so then they can go back into the program. So you monitor them for two years after they're out of the program.
The students are assessed...
Yes.
...to see what level they're in.
Yes.
And we are mandated to provide this instruction, and I'm pleased that we have a better handle on it.
Well, I think that's important. In the past, we had been doing as much as we could, but this time, we decided we were going to just check everyone in the district, so every student in the district was assessed. And I think one of the other pieces that's important is the fact that, and you don't want to always compare MCAS scores, but again, some of the students, when you look at MCAS scores, these are, this is considered a subgroup, and that was one of the areas when we looked at our MCAS scores where we were not doing as well as we should, that we were identifying these students that we needed to spend more time with.
As a district, we are no longer considered a low-incident ELL district. We are now moving into a high category. So it is significantly changed in our student population.
Do we receive any state funding for this?
Not at this time. In order to qualify, we need to have 100 students in the program, which is a determination by the Department of Education, and then they provide reimbursement. So we're at 75. I would imagine that the population will continue to increase, and when we reach a population of 100 identified students who have been assessed to be ELL and need of ELL services, then we'll be able to receive some state reimbursement.
Thank you. Okay, I see no other discussion along that line. Next, do you have something else for us, Mrs. Hayalini?
Yes, I do. Again, I will probably provide the committee with a monthly update on the education evaluation, on the new teacher and administrator evaluation that the state has put forth. The district, as part of the Race to the Top Grant, is working with people at the Department of Education to develop a working document. Now, part of the Race to the Top Grant indicated that we would be piloting, if you will, the new evaluation system beginning in September of 2012. The majority of the districts in the state, if they're not Race to the Top districts, they have one more year to work on the evaluation system. But as part of the grant, what we've done is we've formed a working group that's going to develop our new evaluation document, and it's a very diverse group. We have teachers, administrators, central office personnel, if you will, I would just give you the names. Donna Halt is an elementary-level teacher, Robin Murray is a middle-level teacher, Anita Newman is an elementary-level teacher, as well as the union president, Natalie Windsor is a high school representative, Dr. Forbes, Heidi Latander is an elementary administrator, Dave Thompson is a middle school administrator, and myself. And what we are going, and you, Ms. Riley, as well, we're asking you to participate as the school committee chair. You're volunteering your services, if we will, if we may. A couple of things are happening. We have just been notified recently that on January 10, the Department of Education is going to release their new educator model system, and what they will, what we'll be doing is we're going to be listening in on a webinar in which they're going to discuss what implementation guides will be available, what the rubrics are, and as much information as they can give forth on January 10. Then what is going to be happening is our same working group is going to be attending a regional workshop on January 30, and it's about a two-hour workshop that the Department of Ed is going to have, hopefully, handouts. They will give us sample evaluation documents that we can look at as we go forth. This new system is very, very different from the old teacher evaluation system that we've had. Our administrators have given their staff information about this. Again, we haven't given them a lot of information because this is new and it's just coming down the pipe. What I can tell you is there are going to be standards for administrators and standards for teachers, and there are basically four standards of practice in each category. For administrators, their four standards are going to be instructional leadership, management and operations, family and community partnerships, and professional... management and operations, family and community partnerships, and professional culture. And there will be rubrics that they will be evaluated on these categories. For teachers, the four standards of practice will be curriculum planning and assessment, teaching all students, family and community engagement, and professional culture. What also is very different from the past evaluation systems, when an individual is rated at the end of the year, there are going to be, there will be four categories: exemplary, proficient, needs improvement, and unsatisfactory. And just looking at some of the initial documents, I think we can feel with fairly good confidence that the majority of our teachers are going to be considered proficient. Exemplary, we always have those few who would go up and above. I would say the rarity would be the needs improvement and unsatisfactory. But again, we're getting more documentation about what these rubrics will look like. What is also important, and while we are working on this as quickly as we can, anyone who is a Race to the Top district, as Bridgewater- Rainham is, will be required to submit their proposed evaluation document to the Department of Education this summer. So as we work through this, we're going to be having meetings with the union. It will also involve some bargaining as well, but it's going to be something that we have to continually meet. So I'm anticipating at least probably two meetings a month after we initially get all of the information of what's going to be included. The Department of Ed is also going to provide us with some suggested documents that have been piloted in other school districts. So that could be something, you don't have to necessarily reinvent the wheel. We can take a look at that and see if we want to adopt that or adapt it to some other ideas. But again, each month, I'll be giving the committee an update on where we are with this.
Thank you, Mrs. Paylen. Any comments, Dr. Forbes?
Yes. This is going to be a very rigorous evaluation system for all educators, and it's going to include a lot more monitoring, looking at student performance. So it's an exciting time, and thank you Chairman Riley for agreeing to volunteer and accepting-
The draft.
The draft. We appreciate that, Madam Chair.
All right. You're welcome. Thank you. Any comments? Yeah, looking at administrative and school committee reports, we have a monthly budget update from our Department of Business Services. Mrs. Seedorf?
Thank you. I believe you have in your packets the monthly budget report. And there's just a couple of things I'd like to point out. On page two, in the top section, about the fifth account down, the Medicaid billing services account, we have moved that account to page nine and put it in the proper section. Right now, it was in the twenty-one-ten section. It belongs in the fifty-five-hundred section. So if you look at page nine, you'll see that we've transferred all of the funds, as well as the costs, to that line. And again, page nine, I'd say it was, right in the middle of the page, you'll see account ten, fifty-five-hundred, four-oh-one, zero-zero-six, twenty-five-five, expense Medicaid billing. We have the budgeted amount there and the expenditures. So it's now in its proper location for end-of-year reporting. Also, on page three, we had under one of the salary accounts for the lateral moves, there was an adjustment in the year-to-date column that required a correcting entry. So the correct balance in that account is going to be five thousand, four hundred and seventy-six dollars and eighty-six cents. There had been a negative six thousand showing up in the year-to-date column. That's been reversed. Let's see. In the page four, in our substitute area, this is one of our volatile areas that we watch feverishly every month to see how we're doing. And overall, it looks like we're doing very well. We do have, in one of our lines, an overage due to a long-term illness, but for the most part, our balance looks pretty well at this time of year. I guess we've been pretty lucky with our weather and with folks being in and to work and healthy. For the most part, everything has been encumbered that needs to be encumbered. There are some items that you can't encumber, for instance, like substitutes or things that have not yet been foreseen to be spent. Our, our utilities are coming in fairly well. They're just starting to come in with the heat, and as, as we know, the weather's been pretty good, so we're doing very well with heat in combination with the reduction in cost for gas that we've just started kicking in this year. I think we're going to see some, some good numbers there this year. Electricity is doing well. We still have a balance, as well as our year-to-date so far payments are doing well. So overall, I think we're moving along rather nicely. I don't see anything that's out of whack or strange or problematic. I'll keep an eye on all of those volatile areas, like substitute accounts and snowplow. We haven't had any snow, except for that October one, and yet it keeps knocking. Hopefully, that will continue, but we'll keep an eye on those. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them or explain anything that-
Any questions? Two, three, or four?
I do have a couple of other things. I don't know if you received the memo for the books to be declared surplus?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. We have a number of books over at the Loud Liberty Elementary School that are no longer being used. They're actually taking up some space, some very important space that we'd like to use for other things. We have collections for reading from Harcourt, copyright two thousand and one, for grades two, three, and four. We have math, Math Central Books, published by Hooten-Mifflin, copyright nineteen ninety-eight for grades two, three, and four. And in science, we have Science Horizons, published by Silver, Burdette, and Gin, copyright nineteen ninety-one. And again, that's grades two, three, and four. We'd like to have those declared surplus, and our intention is to sell them to a used book vendor if possible. If not, they will be brought somewhere else. Someone who wants them or another district-
And we have your recommendation for that, Ms. Paylen?
Yes. I recommend you declare-
Okay. We have that in the form of motion from Mrs. Layton, second by Mr. DeAndrea. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? So voted.
Thank you. And lastly, I have two previous-year invoices that were not paid during fiscal year two thousand and nine and two thousand and eleven, and because they're previous-year, they need to be voted to be taken from E and D. One is a June two thousand and nine unemployment, and another, the other one is a January two thousand and eleven unemployment. For some reason, the invoices did not get to us timely and were not paid, and we were presented with them just recently. The two thousand and nine unemployment, the cost is two thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars and seven cents plus interest of one thousand, two hundred and fifteen dollars and sixteen cents, for a total of three thousand, four hundred and forty-five dollars and twenty-three cents. The January two thousand and eleven is eight thousand, four hundred and seventy-four dollars and ninety-two cents plus interest of nine hundred and seventy-four dollars and twenty-six cents, for a total of nine thousand, four hundred and forty-nine dollars and eighteen cents. Altogether, both of those bills total twelve thousand, eight hundred and ninety-four dollars and forty-one cents. And again, these would be monies that would have to be voted from E and D.
Would you do that as one motion or two separate motions?
I would, I would do two separate, I would do both bills separately.
And we have your recommendation, Dr. Forbes?
Yes.
So we need a motion to approve the June two thousand and nine bill for the unemployment reimbursement totaling three thousand, four hundred and forty-five dollars and twenty-three cents. Motion by Dr. Paylen, second, Mrs. Layton. Any discussion?
I just have a quick question.
Yes.
Where you say that the invoices were not received or lost, I'm hoping that if they were lost, that we have mechanisms in place that this won't happen?
Well, you don't, you're not ever sure that you're, you're getting a bill in a given month. Sometimes they'll combine months. In one of the cases, we had already received a June bill, but there was another June bill that we weren't expecting. So, you know, we didn't get it, we weren't expecting to get it. So sometimes that occurs, where you don't get a bill because there's nothing that's been charged that month. So it's not something you know you're going to have them every month, why not?
But if we have lost any, do we have measures in place? I believe that was-
I just, I mean, I'm assuming, I mean, they don't give it to us, and yet we have the interest too. It seems kind of-
Well, they'll say, we mailed it to you, but it, it may not have ever reached us. And that's the issue.
But I don't think it's a matter where we get it, we lose, okay?
That's what I was hoping, okay. I was hoping that was not the case.
And both Mary and I are always asking, you know, where's the new one? You know, do we have it? So we're always checking for them as well, just to keep on top of what that's going to look like in the budget, so.
Okay. Very good. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. And a motion to pay the January twenty-eleven unemployment reimbursement of eight thousand, four hundred and seventy-four dollars, ninety-two cents plus interest of nine seventy-four, twenty-six, for a total of nine thousand, four hundred and forty-nine, eighteen. Motion by Dr. Primandowski, second by Mrs. Layton. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. Any questions?
I think that's all I have for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have votes to approve Akushnet and Norton Public Schools as members of the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. Massachusetts Association of, oh, I'm sorry. As Reed's Collaborative-
And Reed's, that's okay. Reed's Collaborative, yes. The collaborative Reeds that we, are members of, the Board of Directors has approved the addition of Akushnet and Norton Public Schools to become additional members. The approval of this is subject to approval by the school committees of all of the other members in the collaborative. Therefore, I recommend to you that you vote to approve as follows. First, it should be two votes, to accept the Akushnet Public Schools as a member of Reed's Collaborative, the one-year trial membership to be effective beginning July one, two thousand and twelve.
And we have a motion by Dr. Primandowski, second by Mr. Vasvatikas. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Thank you. The second vote should be to accept the Norton Public Schools as a member of Reed's Collaborative, the one-year trial membership to be effective beginning July one, two thousand and twelve.
Motion by Dr. Primandowski, second by Mr. Vasvatikas. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. And to Dr. Forbes. And now, I was trying to jump ahead a little bit here. Massachusetts, trying to set a record here. Massachusetts Association of School Committees, Massachusetts Association of Superintendents had their annual meeting, and one of our members, Mr. Vasvatikas, attended that. And you have a little report for us?
Sure. Thank you. Last month, during the Veterans Day holiday, I had the opportunity to attend the forty-seventh Annual Massachusetts Association of School Committees Joint Conference. It was down in Hyannis on the Cape. I was able to spend three out of the four days of the conference, attending various workshops, listening to guest speakers. On the final day of the conference, I had the opportunity to participate in the new member orientation, which, as being a newly-elected member of the school committee, I found to be very beneficial. It built off of my experience with the, the Charting the Course program that I took back in May. Discussed a broad range of activities, everything from parliamentary procedure to budget negotiations, a whole other list of topics that we went over. Here are my notes. Overall, it was, it was a good experience to network with superintendents and school committee members from the neighboring communities. There's a lot going on, a lot to learn, not only as a new member, but I think just to bring back information to the committee. There's always going to be something new that we should keep be informed of. And some of the things that caught my attention at the conference, where there was some green initiatives going on at various schools, energy-saving costs, different programs like that, smart board technologies that some of the schools were using. And another interesting workshop was also a, a push to connect with families who have moms or dads or family members overseas participating in our armed forces, so that was, that was interesting as well. So overall, it was a good experience, and I look forward to participating in, in future conferences, because it's not only beneficial to me as a new member, but I think it's good for the district as a whole.
It was well-attended?
It was. It was, it was very crowded. I actually had to park down the street and walk to the, the conference center, so next time, I'll get there a little earlier.
Thank you, George. Anyone have any questions? Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. Budget Subcommittee Update. Our Budget Subcommittee Chairman, Mrs. Layton?
We did have our first meeting regarding the fiscal year thirteen budget. I don't have a lot to report, but we did start to look at it and start to look at the priorities for the upcoming year. Obviously, the presentation we had earlier from Mrs. Paylen about the English language learners will factor into how we move forward with our staffing, but we are moving ahead, and we have our next budget meeting on December nineteenth. So that's all I have to report at this time.
Thank you very much. Site Dedication Subcommittee Recent Updates. At our last meeting, the Site Dedication Subcommittee had met, but didn't give a complete report because we wanted to keep some of it until after the reception that was being held for the individuals. So, Mr. DeAndrea, can you update us on that?
Sure. The Site Dedication Committee met last month, and we voted to approve a request by a group of Bridgewater-Rainham alumni to name the BR baseball field in honor of John Hank Pearson. And I'll use this opportunity to share some of Mr. Pearson's accomplishments, as outlined in a letter written by Mr. Peter Wyman to the superintendent. Coach Pearson is a lifelong resident of Bridgewater. He graduated from Bridgewater High School in nineteen forty. In nineteen sixty-one, he was hired at Bridgewater-Rainham High School to teach biology, and he coached freshman football and basketball, along with varsity baseball. He did that for twenty-one years. He retired in nineteen eighty-two. Over his twenty-one-year career as a baseball coach, he had two hundred and sixty-one wins, one hundred and twenty-one losses, and four ties, a sixty-eight percent winning percentage. He went to twelve postseasons. He had six Old Colony League championships. He went to the Eastern Mass Finals four times and won it in nineteen seventy-two. And in nineteen eighty-six, he was inducted into the Massachusetts High School Baseball Coaches Hall of Fame. But most impressive is that Coach Pearson always conducted himself in a professional manner, and his teams were known for playing the game with determination, respect, and sportsmanship. And on, and on November twenty-sixth of this year, on his eighty-ninth birthday, at the Veterans Club at a party, they informed him that the BR High School baseball field will forever be known as the John Hank Pearson Baseball Field. So congratulations to Mr. Pearson.
Thank you, Mr. DeAndrea. Okay. Does any school committee members have anything else they want to report at this time? Okay. Moving along. Any unfinished business? None. How about new business? Amendment to the student handbook, Ms. Watson, Bridgewater-Rainham Regional High School Principal.
I'm with the school committee, Dr. Forbes. Tonight, I am here to update the committee on some recent improvements that we have made to fix some of the inconsistencies that are in our handbook. And one of the other things that we wanted to look at at the same time was trying to clarify some of the language. There were some sections where the, where the language, not that it contradicted itself, but it wasn't clear to parents. So we, we took this opportunity to kind of clean up the language a little bit and clarify some of the, the minor things that, that we found throughout the book. The main change is to make sure that our alcohol abuse policy is that if students abuse the alcohol policy, being in possession of, under the influence of- being in possession of, under the influence of, et cetera, it is supposed to be an eight-day minimum suspension. And that was a change that we brought to the committee last spring, which was an increase from the original five days. So we want to make sure that that is across the board, stated that it is a minimum of eight days. And that was the main one. So with your approval, we would like to make those changes, even though we're midway through the year, just so the parents and students are more clear.
Definitely.
Yes, I would support what Ms. Watson has brought to you this evening and ask that the committee vote to approve the amendments.
We have that in form of motion. Mrs. Layton, seconded by Dr. Primandowski. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? So voted.
Madam Chair, I would just like to say that our principal, Watson, has had some excellent publicity this week also. There was an article about Mandarin Chinese and marine biology. Would you care to share a little bit about that?
Sure. Rebecca Hyman came in last Friday, and she wanted to run a story on some of the unique courses that the high school is running, maybe courses that are atypical from what you or I took in high school. So I gave her a list of some of our courses that the kids seem to be really interested in. And two that she had a particular interest in was Mandarin Chinese and our astronomy meteorology course. So she visited both classrooms last Friday. The kids were wonderful. And there's just a great article in the Bridgewater Independent, which I believe will also be in the Rayham Call. But I know it's in the Bridgewater Independent today. So she thoroughly enjoyed it, and the kids loved having her here. So they were all excited, wanting to know if they were in the newspaper. So it was a very nice article.
Excellent. Thank you, Ms. Watson.
Thank you.
Rebecca as well. Okay, let's see. I think we also have a fundraising application. Ms. Watson?
Yes, she has two to see.
Yes, the first one comes from our National Honor Society. They are seeking permission to collect items for soldiers. They want to collect by putting boxes in all of the classrooms. And they want also ask for donations from local businesses for items. These are not cash donations. They're just items, goods, that we would then ship across seas to all of our soldiers who are serving over in the Middle East.
I would ask the committee to support this request.
And you have a motion. Mr. Vasvatikas, seconded by Dr. Primandowski. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? So voted.
Thank you. The second request comes from our student council. Laura Brandos, who is our student council president, wrote me a letter that reads, "Dear Principal Watson, I am a student in 12th grade and would like to help other kids in need. This school year, Children's Hospital of Boston is organizing its second annual school-based coin drive throughout New England. And I think it would be great if Bridgewater-Rayham Regional High School could participate." The program is called Coins for Cures and would run during March and April of 2012. Schools would come together to raise money for children's, and there's a chance for them to win an exciting reward in May. At the end of the program, the top five highest-ranking classrooms that raised the most money receive a little prize. But this is something that the student council did, I believe, last year as well. And Coins for Cures is just a great program run through the Children's Hospital. So they are looking for permission to begin that fundraiser.
And then, Dr. Forbes?
I recommend that the committee approve this fundraising application.
And you have a motion. This will be by Dr. Primandowski, seconded by Dr. Pacey. Any discussion? Hearing none, any call in favor? Any opposed? So voted.
Thank you.
Who is it?
Yes, we also have a gift that Ms. Watson is going to present to the committee.
My person is going to help this one.
Tonight, for the committee's approval, I would like to ask the acceptance of a check in the amount of $150 from Lenz &amp; Lenz Incorporated. Lenz &amp; Lenz Incorporated is an organization that uses our building to provide our students with SAT prep. And this is their donation back to the high school.
Very good. Dr. Forbes?
I recommend that the committee accept this gift from Lenz &amp; Lenz.
And we have a motion by Mr. Vasvatikas, seconded by Dr. Primandowski. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? So voted. With the letter in mind, I appreciate you.
I also have a gift...
Thank you, Ms. Watson.
...that was sent to me. It is the gift of transportation to the Prepaton Family Court on National Adoption Day. Our... I believe that's in Brockton. Our marching band went to this and provided music. And we've... I received a paid invoice from Lucini Bus Lines in the amount of complimentary bus trip in the amount of $268.60. And I would ask the committee to approve this.
Motion to approve is recommended. Motion by Dr. Primandowski, seconded by Dr. Pacey. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? So voted. Dr. Forbes? Oh, yes. Mrs. Layton?
I am currently a member of the negotiating committee by giving my other time commitments related to budget and the insurance funding